Let the call to order the Select Board meeting of September
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, thank you, two thousand and twenty-three, pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one. We'll be going into executive session in room three oh nine. I need a motion for that.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. Let's, we can vote, at this point, we can vote together. All in favor?
No.
We have to do a roll call.
Roll call.
On that one, okay. Thank you. Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, four zero. We will retire to the executive session, be back here at six thirty. Thank you very much. Call to order, the Select Board meeting of September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. This is an open meeting, begins in room three oh four. Acknowledge, some members may be attending remotely. If they do, we will do our individual roll call vote. Let's please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing while we honor our veterans, both past and present. Thank you very much. Please proceed. Welcome, everyone, to our meeting. We are ready to go. No appointments tonight? New business?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to go to the Pathways Committee Heritage Trail logo approval. Someone here to speak?
Well, I do expect Sarah La Basier to be here.
Okay.
She was intending to come. She's the chair, so I don't know if you want to delay.
Can we?
Take it out of order?
Right you did, Tom?
Sure. I can do my best to pinch hit, whatever your pleasure is.
Want to wait?
At some point in time, you want to pinch hit, let us know, and we'll insert you in. All right, Mr. Roscoe? Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Oh, never mind. Here she is.
Okay.
Hey, Sarah.
Let yourself, okay.
Perfect timing.
You're up.
When you're ready, you step forward and introduce yourself and tell us what's going on. All right? Thank you. You collect yourself, it's okay. There you go.
Hi, I'm Sarah La Basier. I'm the chair of the Dartmouth Pathways Committee, and we are here to ask for the Select Board to approve the logo that we have had created for the Dartmouth Heritage Trail. So you're all aware, as the lovely photos are in the hallway, of the eight original kiosks that were placed around town at the three hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the town. And so we, originally, it was conceived as a ten kiosk display project, and two were not done originally, and so Andrew Langhauser was, is a town resident who is very interested in completing that project, so he went back to the original, the original creator of the storyboards, and he's basically, he's spearheaded the project, and then, but he's not actually on the Dartmouth Pathways. He, he just brings us all the information, and as there's decisions to be made, we have approved them and voted for them and such, and so Doug Roscoe and also Andy went to UMass Dartmouth in the spring, and they, students in, I cannot remember the name of the class. Do you remember the name?
Senior, Capstone Design.
Capstone Design class, senior students, with input from the Pathways Committee, and Andy created a logo, so I believe you should have them in your packets, and then I, if you, if anyone else would like them, I have, have some here. Do you have one? You're all set? Okay. So, we're just primarily here to ask if you approve of the logo, and then the purpose of using them, or the, the way that we would like to use them is to create signs, which we have had money from the CPC, and have signs made to place along the route between, we've created a draft route between the, all the ten kiosks, and to promote it as a bicycle-friendly route, so we've chosen bicycle-friendly streets where as, as safe as possible, and we'd like to have the signs throughout that trail, that route, so that people can follow them one to the other.
Great. Nice. And who's going to install the signs?
We reached out to Tim Barber. They are very short-staffed, so we are looking at some volunteer groups, like Boy Scouts or other groups that do volunteer projects, and I'm sure members of our committee will be on hand to help, and, but we'll have to make sure that we follow any directives from the DPW as well, so.
Yeah, that'd be the right.
One hundred percent.
The right route, as far as I'm concerned.
Also, consider the New Bedford Vocational School.
Yes, they created, they built the kiosks and installed the first one. They did a wonderful job.
Beautiful.
Yeah.
So what will these be made out of?
Standard street sign material, like.
Metal? The metal material?
Yeah, metal, yeah.
Great.
And, and posts. If there's no existing posts, we'll buy posts to install them.
aluminum steel posts.
Yeah, it looks great.
Aluminum signs, steel posts.
Size about twelve inches by eighteen inches, and then directional arrows underneath them also to, so, to lead people along.
That's good.
Nice.
Just one quick question.
Yes.
Brown versus green?
Oh, we, brown, orange, yes, whatever you want to call that.
As far as you want it to stand out?
Yes.
Make sure, okay.
Exactly.
Reflective material, non-reflective? Because you can get both.
I suppose if it weren't exorbitantly more expensive, reflective would be better.
I'm trying to think.
Who would follow guidelines from DPW?
Yeah, I'm trying to think, custom signs versus, I haven't done a custom sign in a few years. I don't think it's that much more, maybe, maybe ten, fifteen dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Something like that.
Would definitely consider if it's safer.
How many signs?
Yeah, right, true, there wouldn't be, would be less likely that people are riding the route in the nighttime to see things, but.
How many signs do you anticipate needing?
Approximately fifty-five. That's a rough estimate, but we'd like to do it turn by turn and, like, really nail down that, those, that need first, but that's just our estimate at first.
Okay. Nice presentation.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm going to add one more thing. The Indigenous People History and Culture Committee?
Yes.
Is talking about additional kiosks.
Oh, beyond the ten? Okay.
Those ten, yeah, so.
Is that what they're here for today?
No.
Okay, well, I was going to say, and listen anyway.
No, but that's a future task, so.
Wonderful, we could definitely.
Get a price, you know, for, perhaps you may need more.
Absolutely, that'd be wonderful. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Are we ready to, any motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? We can vote in unison. Mr. Gracie is not on board. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Four zero. Thank you very much for doing the work and getting it done. It's going to look great.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you coming in. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McDonald?
Make a, make a suggestion that we take up the Council on Aging Board appointment so that we can get the person here.
One of the greatest motions you've made in a long time. I accept it.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Who do we have here?
Amy De Pietro, Dartmouth Council on Aging. So we're here tonight to present a jersey capitas. She's our most recent nomination, the, our Council on Aging Board has nominated her to be on our board. She brings with her a tremendous amount of experience with the senior population. Let her take the mic.
Hi, everybody, thank you so much. I am truly honored to have been invited to be part of the board for the past twenty years. I have worked with the senior population. I've worked at nonprofits, Catholic Social Services, senior care option plans, and now at the state level. My passion is seniors, advocating for the seniors, and I'm sure that you've seen, the seniors we had twenty years ago are not the seniors we have today. The needs are changing, even in our towns. We stereotype our town seniors, but the needs are great. A lot of problems that we thought were city problems are now becoming town problems, and I'm honored to help and be part of the board.
Make a motion to approve.
Gladly, a second.
Any discussion? I, I'd just like to add that this is, we're moving forward to a very dynamic time in the history of the COA.
Correct.
Looking at the facility and what it can do and how we can serve better, and I look forward to our board working closely with the COA to help you out, to keep this momentum going because of the growing need, and thank you for putting your name forward.
No, thank you.
We ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, four zero, unanimous. We appreciate all you're going to do for us, and thank you, Amy.
Thank you so much. Great.
Okay. Any other out of orders, Mr. McDonald?
Okay.
We're going to move to the Indigenous People History and Culture Committee update charge. Mrs. Brooks?
Sure. In the packet, you can see the original charge, and then you can see the one that the school committee sent back with some crossouts and some changes of wording, and this is something that the Indigenous People History and Culture Committee have been going back and forth with representatives from the school department, so I, I think the biggest concern, one was that some of our language looked like we were going to be providing instructional materials that we expected the school department to use, and that's not the case, so they've changed that wording, and then a little concern about who can vote and who can't, which is a bylaw issue, and in discussion, there weren't too many things we thought we needed to vote on, but we are making, and they changed the word from "may" to "shall," which makes, certainly makes more sense, working on having a person of indigenous history to themselves to be a part of our committee, and that's been our biggest hang-up, is trying to find someone that was interested in volunteering and was of a native nation themselves. We had someone attend our most recent meeting, and we're going to wait for them to let us know whether they can have the time and commitment to the group, but I think whether or not they're appointed, I think they're going, going to be a great resource for, for us, and they actually do live in Dartmouth, but it has been tricky trying to get someone with that lineage to be a part of our, our working group.
Sorry to hear that.
Yeah.
Really?
We were too.
Yeah.
But we think we've made a, a connection now, so.
And with that, I think something will follow us while others. It's not as simple as it sounds, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of history there with a lot of different tribes. We're trying to satisfy all different parties and do the right thing, and honor the people who deserve to be honored as well. That was just kind of an informational, any else?
Well, the committee charge that's in here looks like the old committee charge. It is the new charge with the changes incorporated.
Oh, this one is? I'm sorry, because I didn't see the.
So you can, and I just, they have had some bullets in different places, but to be consistent, so this is, everything incorporated, word for word.
All right. Sorry, I looked right past it.
Yeah, if the board wants to vote on the amended, yep, charge, that'd be good.
Okay.
So motion to accept the, the new committee charge for the Indigenous People History and Cultural, Culture Committee?
Second.
Second. Any discussion, or comments, questions? Ready to vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, I hear none, four zero, unanimous. Thank you very much. Next, we move to the Charter Review Committee reappointments.
Yes, this just is, the committee needs to be reappointed. Their terms have expired, so we have the committee on here, the existing members to be reappointed.
So do we need to state each name, or just the people before us? Is this in this?
Make a motion, make it, make a motion.
I'll make a motion to reappoint the names, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight people come before us tonight for a reappointment to the Charter Review Committee.
I think you should read the names.
Read the names.
Heidi Silverbrook, Sean McDonald, Mary White, Teresa Hamm, Brian O'Hare, Steve Mello, and Christopher O'Neil.
We have a second?
A second.
Any discussion or comment on it? Ready to vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, I hear none. I, I'd like to just make one comment in the charter, because it's a, as you know, two of our members have been, have been involved in this deeply. It's a giant process with so many things that can go in so many different directions, and I think that my, my feeling is that maybe it's time to pick a small handful of really critical, important ones, and move those forward with the goal of presenting it, hopefully, even to town meeting in June, because this could go on forever and ever with different, different choices and different categories, and I think it may be it's time to really pick off the most important fruit and concentrate on those, whatever they may be.
Yep, that is the plan of the charter.
Great.
We meet this Thursday night and to look over the substantive changes that have, we've proposed with the end goal in mind of going to the June town meeting.
Great. Okay.
Great.
Any other comments? Nobody? Okay, let's move on. Next.
You have to take everyone's vote.
We voted.
I think you took a motion and a second. I don't know if.
We voted.
Four oh.
I'm quite sure we voted.
Yeah.
We vote again?
That was my mistake.
We just don't do it by, yeah, without Frank on the screen.
Usually, you are usually correct, Mr. McGinnis, I'm not offended. Okay. Next, Municipal Broadband Advisory Committee reappointments.
Make a motion that we reappoint Aaron Cadu, Saul Raposo, Junior, and Kevin Estes to the committee.
Second.
Discussion, comments, anybody? We ready to vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, I hear none, four zero. Thank you very much for serving, and thank you so much to the Charter Committee for serving as well. Dartmouth Cultural Council appointment, Margaret Hollister.
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
Anybody have any discuss, comment? Let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, I hear none. Thank you, Margaret, we appreciate your service. We did the Council on Aging, that was great. Next, we go to a fairly more substantive subject matter, the DTEA contract ratification. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes, this is the DTEA, Dartmouth Town Employees Association. It's the administrative collective bargaining unit in town. We've reached agreement on their contract for two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-five, and it's been approved by the collective bargaining unit, and it's been reviewed by council and as well as our administrative and financial staff.
Motion to approve the DTA contract.
As submitted, right?
Mm-hmm.
Second.
Any comments, questions? We're ready to vote. All in favor, please vote. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, I hear none. The motion passes unanimously, four zero.
Also make a motion that we allow Mr. McGinnis to sign on behalf of the board. Sign the contract on behalf of the board.
Okay.
So, Ms. McGinnis?
Is that for?
Oh, that's for the new member.
Is that a recommendation that you asked for?
We're going to have to put it on the next meeting, but we'll take it.
Okay. Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Interruption?
It's okay.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
For what?
You want to be?
The motion was to.
Have me sign the contract.
Oh, have Sean sign it, yes, yes, sorry.
Does Sean McGinnis make the motion? No, I can't do that, okay, thank you.
Not yet. That's in the next contract.
We have a second? We have a second?
Yes, we do.
Okay. We ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, I hear none. Passing unanimously. Okay, town meeting warrant, vote. Mr. McGinnis?
Just a, a, one note, we added, there's a petitioned article sponsored by resident Dan Brush.
Yeah.
We invited him to the meeting, he was unable to attend, so we also asked our legal counsel to review the motion, and they asked me to mention to the board that the legality of the article being reviewed by town council, along with any possible floor amendments that may be needed, they're doing that currently. Whether the warrant article is legal would go to whether a town meeting can even vote on it, but the Select Board does not need to consider that in voting on whether to support it or not for the, the warrant. The board can vote based upon policy considerations, and then town council can indicate at town meeting whether the article is out of order.
For the benefit of the public, could you give us a little background on what we're talking about?
The article is to change the contribution rate of the health insurance for employees.
So we could vote.
Expect more the night, the night of town meeting to hear from Dan Brush and Anthony?
Yes.
Okay.
And we would, we can vote whether we want to allow it on the article or not?
No, whether we support it.
You could, you're just voting whether you support it or not.
As part of the total warrant.
And we need to vote on this tonight?
So it gets a need warrant?
Yes.
Okay. So we need a discussion and a vote tonight?
Well, you need to vote on the warrant as a whole.
Right.
And then a recommendation on the articles in the warrant.
Including this, but, well, Sean brought this one up first, so.
Right, no, it's just, it's background information.
All right.
So there's two votes that are going to be taken.
Correct.
Well, more than two votes, but two, two votes, one with a single vote and the other one with a subset.
Of the entire warrant.
Right.
So discussion now is whether or not we support this, citizens?
No, no, that comes in the article, when it comes time for the article.
He just gave us background information.
Right.
We don't vote on anything.
We're not going to vote on separate.
You get to, it's the last item anyway.
You get to it in the.
Oh, okay, so, okay. So we have enough information to go through the warrant now, and then this will be?
Yes, this is the final warrant is as presented in the packet.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay. Go through one article at a time? Or what's our pleasure here?
So let's just date, give everybody the date to make sure they know it. Tuesday, October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, seven PM, Dartmouth High School Auditorium, five five five, Bega Ville Road.
Okay. Are we going to do each article individually tonight?
You should vote on each article individually, yes. So whether you just want to read the titles or, and vote on them, or read the title and the?
Make a motion that we recommend Article One, which is the Community Preservation Committee, the Pass Commandant Drink and Water Land Protection Project.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, four zero, passes.
Make a motion that we recommend Article Two, which is the Community Preservation Committee, Dartmouth Cultural Center Restoration and Renovation, Phase One.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, four zero, passes.
Make a motion that we recommend Article Two, which is the Community Preservation Committee, Dartmouth Cultural Center Restoration and Renovation, Phase One.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I hear none, unanimous, four zero.
Motion to recommend Article Three, which is the outstanding bills in the amount of ten thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and ninety-eight cents, as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I hear none, passes unanimously.
Make a motion that we approve the appropriation of eight hundred thousand dollars to the stabilization fund.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, I hear none, passes unanimously.
One item on Article Five. So the capital planning committee has reviewed these items. They are going to vote on them this week, but we've reviewed it with them. We don't anticipate they're going to be removing any of these articles. They're meeting this week to discuss if any need to be added. With the timing of the Select Board meeting, we needed to get this on the warrant, so we're, we've recommended if they have any changes, they will present them at town meeting as an amendment.
Has the Finance Committee voted on the warrant?
Finance Committee has voted on all but this article, because they're waiting for capital.
So is it possible just to hold Article Five till our next meeting?
No, because, because the next time we meet is October third, and the warrant, and the warrants have to be out in the mail by the, by the October fourth.
So we could always.
It's got to be two weeks.
We can always approve it, right? And then we can make any adjustments at town meeting.
Wait to the, wait to the motion.
My concern is something that is going to be adjusted at town meeting, like, from the floor, so you're thinking like the?
That can be happened to any article. Any article can be amended on the town meeting floor, no matter what it is.
Right. But to add, if they wanted to add another item or department?
If they want to add, if they want to add, they got to come up with a funding source.
Okay.
If they wanted to track, they got to detract from a funding source. So no matter what happens, it's just same thing with the budget. If they, if they want to add, you know, Department One, an extra ten thousand dollars, where's the money going to come from?
Yep.
They have to tell us where the money's going to come from, so.
Question, Mr. Carrero. As far as the Finance Committee vote has been concerned?
Gary Carrero, Director of Finance. So we met with the, just go back a little bit, we met with CIPC, we did have these that you see in front of us as proposals. On Thursday, they will vote to recommend these, and their concern was on the schools and the DPW to hear from both those department heads. So they'll, they'll be talking to them on Thursday, as Sean had mentioned, I think that, well, they won't be taking anything away, they may add if they feel that they, they want to add, but going back to what we had talked about at the prior Select Board meeting, we approved five point three million dollars in free cash. They, they wanted to segregate a million of that to hold this contingency in case that we don't have some of these opera projects come through. They also wanted to hold, one of my recommendations was to hold about a million, a million and a half dollars to put in a stabilization fund for long-term capital projects, which could happen in the spring. So traditionally, what we do is we spend all the free cash, the whole five point three million, but my recommendation was, because we're starting to look at some of these long-term, more expensive projects, we don't do that. So they do want to hear from the two departments that I mentioned, I, they may want to add something, they may not, but they will take the vote on Thursday. Finance Committee, because the vote wasn't taken by CIPC, they will, they will hold off, but they will also vote on this Thursday, because the meeting is at night.
This is not just a simple vote of including these items, it could mean these other adjustments[1639.91] This is not just a simple vote of including these items, it could mean these other adjustments as well.
Well, they, they would, the only funding source they would have was, would be free cash to use. And right now, there's about two and a half million dollars. My recommendation to the committee was, don't spend it, use it in the spring to fund this capital project, long-term capital-
No, I understand that, where's that going to show up in the article, in the warrant?
That doesn't, that doesn't show up anywhere, it just sits in a, in the account. So if we don't spend the free cash, that just sits there until the spring.
Okay.
It's only, it's only what we spend.
Do you expect in the spring that there would be an actual article that talks about creating that, that million dollar reserve?
Yes.
Capital stabiliz-, okay.
Could you, if we go along here, and you have a negative vote from the finance committee, because you mentioned it, if there is one based on the rest of these articles?
There was no, there was no negative, just on Article Five you're speaking, or?
No, the rest of the warrant.
No, there were no, everything was voted for in favor, they just held back on Article Five.
Great, okay, good.
Do you know what happened to know what the town clerk's asking for, a high-speed tabulator?
Yes, so that is for, to tabulate the ballots during elections.
It's a fancy calculator, isn't it?
So what happens is the, the current tabulators, when you put the, when voters put the ballot in, it takes a few seconds to read, well, more than a few seconds.
Yes.
Now that they have the mail-in option, which has gotten quite popular, so that the town still needs to provide that, they need to set up a precinct and pay staff to come in overtime and on weekends to run the ballots through, and there's tens of thousands, I shouldn't say tens, thousands of ballots that they need to run through, and it's time-consuming. This tabulator is 10 times faster, so it will save a lot of time and money.
One other article, Mr. Chin, was Article 14, they did not vote on that because they want to meet with Dan, the creator of the article, so he was not available. And I believe, I don't know if he will be available even Thursday to, to meet with the finance committee. So if they vote no, it's probably because there was, there was no further information.
They vote separate from us, so just-
Yeah.
But as far as these financial ones, they voted in favor of these.
So we're still on five?
So we're at Article, Article Five.
No, we're not, yeah, we're Article Five, I'm sorry.
We didn't vote, didn't vote for?
No, we haven't, no, there's no motion.
So we're voting on something that is, that we're in good faith.
It's, it possibly is incomplete, you don't think they're going to remove any of these?
I do not, they, when we went through the, the items, they recommended what you see here. And it could be additional that they recommend.
Make a motion that we recommend Article Five as presented in the warrant tonight. Town government, $49,000. Management Information Systems, $57,975. Town clerk, $25,000. DPW Administration, $35,000. DPW Highway, $1,220,500. DPW Construction, $85,500. DPW Water Enterprise Fund, $50,000. Parks and Recreation, $40,000. Conservation, $49,000.
Second.
Do we have a, an amount for all of these together, it's less than, no, it's?
One million, it's at the top of the article.
One, it's total, is $1,561,975 from surplus revenue, $50,000 from Warner Enterprise retained earnings.
So as far as I can see, this vote is taken, we're taking, and very significant on this date, on the information that we know now.
It's based upon what is in front of us.
Right, so that'll be-
Nothing more, nothing less.
Nothing more, nothing less, and anything else after that is an amendment to the article.
Okay.
We have a second.
We have a second?
Mm-hmm.
We did, okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from anybody? Want to make sure we're clear on this.
I just wish we felt confident that it was-
Yep, crystal.
But that's okay.
Okay. Are we ready to vote?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, I hear none, passes unanimously.
Make a motion that we recommend Article Six, which is the appropriation to the stabilization fund for collective bargaining and non-union agreements in the amount of $405,000.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Let's vote, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, I hear none, unanimous.
Make a motion that we recommend Article Seven, which is the appropriation for collective bargaining agreements in the amount of $549,702.43, which is $160,000 from surplus revenue, $945 from the Water Enterprise Fund, $235.89 from the Sewer Enterprise Fund, $5,502.65 from the DCTV Enterprise Fund, $1,561.89 from the Waterways Management Enterprise Fund, $370,000 from the tax levy, and $11,457 from the DCTV Enterprise Fund from DCTV revenues.
Could you repeat that?
No.
Second.
Second, any questions, comments? Let's vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, I hear none, unanimous, thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Make a motion that we recommend Article Eight, which is the appropriation for use of stabilization funds for the opioid legal settlement receipts in the amount of $85,000.
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, I hear none, unanimous, thank you.
Motion that we recommend Article Nine, Street Acceptance, Kyle Jacob Road.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, I hear none, four zero, unanimous.
Make a motion that we recommend Article Ten, the Street Acceptance, Magnolia Lane.
Second.
Discussion, questions, let's vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I hear none, unanimous, thank you.
Motion that we recommend Article Eleven, the Street Acceptance, Ivy Way.
Second.
Discussion, oh, let's vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, I hear none, unanimous.
Make a motion that we recommend the Street Acceptance, Sunflower Drive.
Article Twelve, second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I hear none, how do you get your own name on a street sign?
Whatever you want to put in, whoever the developer is, they get to choose the name.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Unless it's already taken.
To keep that in mind, thank you for that.
The only choice that they don't have is the numbering, that's up to the post office.
Got it. Okay, thanks for the info.
Mm-hmm.
Article Thirteen.
Make a motion that we recommend Article Thirteen, the zoning bylaw amendment, as presented in our warrant.
Second.
Any discussion, questions?
It's a great article.
Let's vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, I hear none, four zero, unanimous. Next would be?
Make a motion that we make no recommendation on the citizens petition, the amendment to the town bylaws.
I'll second that.
As a clarification, what are our choices, aside from what you just presented?
We can say yes, we could say no, or we can make no recommendation.
You are saying?
And my, my motion is no recommendation, because there's still some information that's need to be, that needs to be vetted out, and that's town council and also from the, from the petitioner.
So the theory, no theory, the fact is that we, at this point in time, we know very little, so why should we vote on it and perform an opinion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anybody have any comments or questions before we vote on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, I hear none, that's unanimous.
Make a motion that we submit the warrant for the special town meeting of the town of Dartmouth for October 17th, 2023, to the town clerk's office.
Second.
And on time. Any questions, comments? This is the big one. Anybody? Let's vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, I hear none, four zero, thank you, Mr. McDonald, great job. Next.
Town administrator.
Town administrator update.
Yes, I don't have a lot of updates since last week, but the town staff was coordinated in their preparation in response to Hurricane Lee. Fortunately, it was not impactful, so, but it was a good opportunity to practice getting prepared, so things went well. We've completed preparation for town meeting, so that's great, ahead of schedule. And then one item of note, the construction of the pickleball courts on Russell's Mills Road, there's been some discussion. The contractor had sized the court five feet too small. This was an accident on the contractor's part, it's not what was provided to them.
Oh, ouch.
Correct dimensions were provided, we're working on a solution to that currently, but I just wanted to update the board that there's an issue, we are, we know about it, we are working to resolve it with the contractor, and they've been receptive to coming up with some solutions to resolve.
So instead of a, instead of a pickleball court, it's a gurking court?
Yes, we have a new-
The coach should do.
And that's all I have.
You know, we rewrote the rules for the entire game to fit that size court. Unfortunate, but it happens.
Exactly, yes.
No words.
Old business, bliss corner, no new updates, like no good joke, none, this broadband none, and Mass DP Title Five amendments, no new updates on those as well here.
Okay, we have minutes to approve from July 31 and August 14, take them together or separately?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of July 31st.
Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions on those? Let's vote on that one, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I'm going to abstain, I was not there.
Excellent, three zero, one.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of August 14th, 2023.
A second.
Any comments, ready to vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, I hear none, passes as well. Any comments from our members, select board? Updates of any kind?
The only thing that I have is, I know that the last meeting, we talked about the frequency of meeting, meetings from different boards, have you started looking into that, Sean?
Yes, so we're pulling that information together. And we're also looking at a new software application that allows the boards to take their own attendance in real time, and also when we do appointments and reappointments to have them better organized, so we hope to have that the next six months or so, but doesn't solve the issue now.
Yeah, because I mean, you know, I, you know, what's the point of appointing people to boards if they're not meeting?
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean? Well, especially, especially when there's, you know-
Work to be done.
Right, and there's grants involved and whatnot.
We've gone through this before, and we've had them supposedly send in their attendance records.
Yeah, but that's, that's once a year in June when it comes time for the reappointments, but in the meantime-
So have them submit it more than once a year?
At least let us know when they're, at least let us know when they're meeting. How many times have they met in the past year?
I do think when I, when we look on the website, the town website, and some committees, there's nothing there, but has it been totally uploaded now? So everything should be there.
Should be.
Okay, so that's not an excuse that it hasn't been uploaded, okay.
Any else, Ms. McDonald? What was your thought, Mr. Mickelson?
No.
Mrs. Brooks?
The only thing I wanted to say is that we have started to get some of the customer service surveys back, and I think it would be important for us to look at them. I know that they've been forwarded to me, but I think Chris Vitale should forward them to everyone. They are coming into the select board portal, which is just, I guess, do you see those?
Engagement portal?
The engagement portal, but it's, but it's not one that we get directly, so Chris thought we were getting them directly.
No, they're, that goes to the select board mailbox, when one is submitted, but in there, so we can kind of-
So I've asked him to send it out to me, so he could-
So we can pull it all together and send it to you as, you know, the portal kind of provides some statistics to, that you wouldn't get with an email, so we'll provide all that.
Oh, perfect, so we can add that to meeting agenda?
Uh, yep.
I would like to add that, that Mr. McGinnis and I have talked about in October, once town meeting clears, to start setting some priorities regarding composting issues, water quality, water testing, and all the things we can do as a town upfront, in our own terms, in our own pace, regarding whatever state issues there are, because we've got to continue to take charge. So we felt that getting through the town meeting season was important to do, and then we can move forward on that.
I also, along that same line, since that young lady has been to, came before us to tell us about the single-use plastics, I actually went to a shop that gave me a single-use plastic bag in Dartmouth. So should I just tell you who that was?
Yeah, we'll contact them.
Yeah, because I was kind of surprised that that's what we got.
Depends upon the size of the-
Is it a small shop?
If it's a small shop-
Restaurants and small shops can still use them.
Package store?
It's a small shop.
Oh, are they?
I don't know, seems to be doing a heck of a business.
It has to be under a certain, it has to be over a square footage.
Oh, then it's a small business, okay.
Big plastic bags.
I won't rat them out then.
It was really talk about-
Because I've been to others that give us, it's in paper bags, but-
I mean, we work really hard on that, on that plastic, on that bylaw.
When we revisit the heavy-duty plastic bag, we can revisit that too.
Equally as hard.
But then, so then my next thought is about our orange bags, and the quality of those bags, is that something that we could have DPW look at to instead buy a sticker to put on our own bags, or?
No.
I see Sean is, or a paper bag, like a leaf bag or something?
No, because the stick, no, because you can, the stickers would be the same as the bags. The question, the question is, the bags are designed to hold a certain amount of weight.
Certain strength, right.
Okay, and there's, there's concerns. Okay, people who are complaining about the bags are complaining about the ripping, the whatnot and whatnot, and that they have to double-bag, and it causes, what's the point of double-bagging if it's something like that? I've done it both ways. I used to double-bag, I try not to double-bag now, and it seems to be working. The problem is, is that there's a weight limit, and the weight limit on the small bags, I'm not sure exactly what it is, and on, on the large bags, I believe it's 35 pounds, maybe it's a little bit more, I'm not sure. But these are the same bags that are made, they're made by Waste Zero, Waste Zero is a supplier throughout the country on a lot of these bags through other different communities. The thing is this, the reason for the weight limit is that you have people behind the truck who are picking up these bags all the time, and they pick up thousands of bags. And some homes have a single bag, some homes have two, some have eight, 10 bags. That's a lot of, that's a lot of weight that these guys have to lift, and that's the problem that we have with these bags, is that there's a weight limit, and it's, the weight limit is to do two things, it's to make sure that you, you know, you do the trash correctly, but it's also to protect the employee who's the picker. You know, the driver is fine, the driver gets out when there's a lot, but if the driver doesn't need to get out and it's the picker, that's the problem. And people seem to have, don't realize that, that, you know, if you want to, you know, I don't want to say, you know, I don't want to say, you know, if you want to walk a mile in their shoes, you know, feel free to jump on the back of a truck and start picking up the garbage. I mean, these guys pick up the garbage four days out of a work week. That is an awful lot of garbage, and there's over 10,000 accounts on the, on the, on the PAY-YT. So, I mean, that's a lot of people. The only way, there's two ways of handling this. The, we can go with a sticker, but the problem with the sticker is that now it allows people to use the larger garbage bags and make, make the bags heavier, and these guys are going to do it. Or you go to a garbage pickup system similar to the recycling system, where you have a barrel. The problem is, is that now the revenue from the bags disappear, and now your annual fee increases significantly. Gary? Not to put you on the spot, but I'm going to. Right now, our annual PAY-YT is $90. And how many, roughly how many households?
It's more for commercial, also, if you have a commercial account, I think it's 180.
All right, it's 180 for that, okay. If we go with a one-armed system, and we eliminate the revenue from the bags, what does that increase the annual fee to?
Well, I think currently we, I don't know what we have in revenue right now from, from bags, I think it's around, I don't quote, but I think it's around 80,000, yeah, we collect, we collect bags, and that's from various, but if you, if you remember back in the, back in the spring, we funded one of the trucks that, well, the armed trucks, same thing you were talking about for recycling, that's $455,000 truck.
Right.
So that's one truck, if we had to put on six of those trucks, that, that's a lot of money.
Mm-hmm.
So I had some preliminary conversations with Chris when he had started, the Assistant Town Administrator, about the same thing, liability of people picking up trash and, and bags being heavy, some are wet, some are, you know, there's, there's issues with that. But it would be a revenue, it would be a revenue decrease if we, if we did anything else but pick up the trash the way we do now, I mean, it could substantially, we'd have to fund capital items to get trucks.
But, but the whole thing would be, in order for the revenue to basically balance out, you know, you'd have to increase the annual fee.
Yes, and, and if you did, if you did a survey of a few area communities, $90 is pretty reasonable for, for trash pickup for the entire year, obviously you have to pay for the, for the bags and whatnot, but you can go to other communities like, you know, suburbs of Boston where they're paying, you know, $1,000 a year for trash pickup, $500 a year for trash pickup, so we haven't gone up on that in a long time, and we do give the residents a break if they're elderly, or if they meet certain requirements of income, but to go a different route is going to cost a substantial amount of money.
I mean, I have, I have figured out on social media, you know, off the top of my head, where my trash basically is, you know, I, I buy the big bags, so my bags are $2 apiece, so I generally use two bags a week, so now you're talking $104, and add to 90, so my trash pickup for the year is less than 200 bucks. There are people who say they don't want to do with the town, they'll go with, you know, commercial hauler, and they're paying somewhere in the vicinity of maybe 30, 40 dollars a month for the same thing, now all of a sudden, their trash is like 360 to 480 dollars.
I know, I know some individuals pay about 270 every three months, so if you add that up, that's- I know some individuals pay about two hundred and seventy every three months, so if you add that up, that's all over a thousand dollars a year for trash pickup. So, the ninety dollars, and if you manage it and you're recycling, then it's really a no-brainer for the resident.
Great program when we started.
I mean, and has there been some times when the bag has ripped? Yeah, it has, and I make the adjustment. I mean, there have been times when I've just taken the bag because it's ripped. I just take it and I tie it around the bag that's going out with it so that the orange bag is there. So, that when the picker sees it, he sees the orange bag. So, this is where, you know, I agree the sticker program eliminates the thin bags, but it doesn't eliminate the weight problem, and that's where is the concern. So, the concern would be this, is that if the picker goes in, and they have that ability now, that if the bag is too heavy, they're going to leave it right there, and they'll leave a note saying the bag is too heavy. That doesn't happen all too often with the orange bags. It may happen with, you know, their own bags. I mean, look at, I mean, you're talking hefty, hefty, hefty. You know, you look at the commercials, fit more in, and, you know, they, you know, the whole deal. So, this is where, you know, I mean, commercially, I buy sixty-gallon bags, you know, for my properties, you know. We call them the body bags. They're damn big, and they hold a lot. And I wouldn't want those guys, you know, picking up one of those kind of bags.
And if you look at all the private haulers that are out there today, there are really none that are using traditional pickup and throw into the, it's all arm systems.
They're all arm systems.
Because they want to, it's all about time and getting, getting in and out. I mean, like in the town that I am in.
One-man job.
I live in a house with eight streets. You've got five different haulers that come down the road, and they all have arm pickups, so.
Yep.
You know, I think the program is really run well in town.
Anybody else for any comments?
There is one, one thing. There was an event over at Battleship Holly Davidson over the weekend. I can't recall. I believe it was Saturday, yeah, it was Saturday. We were coming out of Beeden, out of Beeden Road to go home, and there was an, there was an incident where there were some Dartmouth police officers on motorcycles, and there seemed to be, can you contact the chief just to kind of give us a report as to what, whether, more than likely, it looks like there might have been an accident there or a breakdown? I'm not sure, but it was, it kind of backed up traffic. I'm just, you know, I know this was a, it was a charitable event. I know there was no alcohol involved, and so that's why there was no one license. There was no entertainment, so.
Okay. Anything else?
Looking to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Let's vote. All in favor of adjourned, please say aye.
Aye.
Hear none, four zero. Thank you very much. Stay dry out there.